And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and ask Mr. Crupp to take the roll call.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. We are joined this evening by our esteemed county council, Mr. Stephen Madcor, and also our very capable clerk of the board, Mary Rathke, who is back from an extended vacation, and we're very glad she's back in the saddle, so. Okay, Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Both Commissioners Schrader and Smith are excused for tonight. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a presentation tonight.
Yes, we do. We have a presentation on cancer awareness, and we have Dr. Sarah Present, our health officer, here this evening to give you the presentation. So come on up, doctor.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Sarah Present. As you mentioned, I am the public health officer for Clackamas County. Thank you for the invitation to speak during our Cancer Awareness Month. This is the second year that Public Health has presented to the board on cancer. We know that for many people in our community who are touched by cancer in any number of different ways, cancer is a daily issue throughout the year. But taking time to reassess and reevaluate our burden of cancer and what we can do about it as a community is a vitally important thing. And again, I thank you for this opportunity. Today, I will talk briefly about the burden of cancer in our community, the factors that increase our risk of cancer, the ways that communities, individuals can reduce their risk, and what we're doing locally to reduce new cases of cancer. Nationally, one out of three women and one out of two men will be diagnosed with cancer sometime in their lifetimes. These are startling numbers. Cancer is the second-leading cause of death in the United States after heart disease, but it's just a close second. Here is the mortality data for the top five causes of cancer, or the top five cancer mortalities in Clackamas County. You can see that for both males and females, lung cancer and respiratory cancers is the number-one killer of cancer deaths in Clackamas County. And this is among, or per 100,000, so for a population of about 390,000, that is 154 and 164 deaths due to lung cancer last year. You can see that blood-related cancers, so leukemia, lymphoma, and other blood-related cancers are in the top five for both men and women. Pancreas and colorectal cancers are in the top five for both men and women, and then prostate and breast cancer for men and women respectively, as far as the mortality rates. There are many causes of cancer. There are many chemicals in our environment, our food, our water, our air that we're exposed to that can lead to changes in the body that cause cancer. There are viruses such as the human papillomavirus and hepatitis C virus that can cause or greatly increase risk of cancers. Genetics, inherited genes from parents and grandparents can increase our risk of getting certain cancers. And then lifestyle factors such as smoking and some other things can cause cancer. Our risk factors, as I mentioned, smoking is the number-one risk factor for cancer. Poor diet, physically inactivity, and obesity are also high-risk factors for cancer. And physical inactivity regardless of your weight is a risk factor for cancer. Infections like the HPV and hepatitis C that I mentioned, UV radiation, and environmental pollutants, and occupational exposures. More than half of the estimated cancer deaths are related to preventable causes. You can see up there, 33% of cancer diagnoses are caused by tobacco use. 20% are due to people being obese or overweight. 16% are due to infections, and 5% due to insufficient physical activity and poor dietary Tobacco. The number of Clackamas County residents who live with a serious illness caused by tobacco increased, as did the number of tobacco-related deaths in the last year. Currently, about 17% of Clackamas County adults regularly smoke cigarettes, and the number of smokers in Clackamas County increased 10,000 between 2013 and 2014. So how can we reduce our cancer risks? Number one, we can all quit tobacco. The tobacco quit line has great resources for people. Quitting tobacco is difficult to do. People should not be afraid to ask for help. They can call the quit line, they can talk to their medical providers. There are medications or other things that people can do to help quit tobacco. Live an active lifestyle. Physical activity can decrease your risk of cancer, and the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District has some great resources to help increase physical activity in our lives. Eating a healthy diet made primarily of deep-colored vegetables. The more the color, more nutrients are in them. And switching from refined grains and white rice to whole grains, oats, barley, quinoa, and brown rice, increasing some of these whole grains and vegetables in our diets can help. Visiting your doctor or primary care provider to talk about your personal risks and see which cancer screenings are appropriate for you at which time. For example, nine out of 10 causes, cases of colorectal cancer can be treated successfully if they are found early. So we in Public Health like to use a line-of-sight paradigm when we look at major, major problems that we have to address. Our main goal looking down the road is to reduce disease among Clackamas County residents. And the steps in which we get there? We want to increase physical activity and healthy food consumption. To do that, we want to increase the community's access to physical activity and healthy food. And to do that, we want to identify the best practices focused on physical activity and healthy food. Thanks to you, the Board of Commissioners, for funding nearly 70 community-based projects since 2011 that have resulted in increased access to health food and opportunities for physical activity. This is some, some data on the Heal Grants. Clackamas County Public Health is currently accepting Heal Grant proposals. The deadline for Heal Grants for the next year is December 17, 2015, so we look forward to hearing some more ideas from our community about how to continue the work that we've been doing. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Present. Commissioner Bernard?
So I have a question. The other day, you know, as we're looking at marijuana in, in the county and well around the state, and I heard the other day that smoking one marijuana joint is as bad as 20 cigarettes. Is there any statistics on marijuana-smoking cause for cancer or anything like that?
I've heard that, too. A lot of the data about marijuana versus tobacco is done in toxicology labs. It's hard to know how it is really affected in the human. But if they look at the smoke that comes off of a tobacco cigarette in a lab and, and analyze it, they can compare marijuana smoke to tobacco smoke and make some assumptions of what's going into humans' bodies when they smoke the same amount. There have been links between marijuana use and certain types of cancers. They are not well-defined at this time. As you know, given that it has, that is a federally illegal substance, research around marijuana has been limited. So there, there are some associations, but we cannot, we don't have definitive causality at this point.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Present.
Thank you.
Right now, we have citizens communication, and I'll call up several people here. Shirley Soderberg and Murad Nori. Either one of you can go first.
Good evening. Dear Clackamas County Commissioners, dear county staff, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Murad Nori, and I'm a resident of Clackamas County since 2002. I'm a member of the Clackamas County Diversity Leadership Council, and since September of this year, I'm the council chair. Council Vice Chair Shirley Soderberg and some members of the council and support staff are here with us. Could you please stand up?
Yeah, thank you.
We're here today to say on behalf of the council, thank you to you for trusting us and giving us this great opportunity to serve as an advisory body to the Board of Commissioners. And we'd like to share with you our thoughts and plans on the council activities to promote diversity leadership in the county. First of all, I should mention that we have such an extraordinary team of people with impressive backgrounds, knowledge, and experience who are very passionate about diversity leadership and got together to implement the vision and mission of the council to develop leadership from diverse communities to increase participation in the county functions. We're growing. We have 13 members now. Four of them joined the council last month, and we have three more applicants who were recommended by the council and are waiting for your approval. We're currently working on the matrix of the council membership to make sure that the diversity of the county communities is fully represented in the council. We're planning to revisit the bylaws of the council to make sure that the bylaws reflect current developments. We're planning to evaluate what we've achieved and set up new strategic goals for the year ahead. We know that the county is very serious about diversity leadership development. With this in mind, the council will consider to propose organizing diversity leadership trainings for current and emerging community leaders. If this is acceptable, the council will work on the curriculum for such training and present it to the Board of Commissioners for approval. So the next fiscal year may be targeted to start such training. These are just a few things we have on our list to do. And to make the long story short, dear Commissioners, expect news from our council. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I'm Shirley Soderberg. I reside in the Oak Grove community here, but I am here as a representative of the Leadership Council, Diversity Leadership Council. Back in early September, the DLC, the Community Festival was held out here on the Commons, and it was represented by a lot of diverse, different committees and organizations of Clackamas County. And DLC had a booth at that fair. And one of our interactions with the public at that time was asking them to participate in a three-question survey about diversity in Clackamas County. We just wanted to know what everyone thought. One of the questions that was asked was, what would you like your county commissioners to know about diversity? The most prominent answers were a need for more encouragement for uniqueness in the county, a need of information printed and verbal, provided in other languages, a need for more diversity training for employees of the county, of which Murad did just address, that we're going to try and address that. The program staff of the county needs to mirror the community. I'm going to repeat that one. The program and staff of the county needs to mirror the community, and I thought that was a big one. And then a lot of them said, well, we, we've done a lot, but we have a long ways to go. The overall theme of answers about diversity is summed up this way: People are different. So we need support, acceptance, value, and a celebration of the differences that make up this county. Thank you for your courtesy of hearing these voices of the citizens of Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you. This last week, something Emmett Wheatfall is very involved in was the Northwest Public Employee Diversity Conference. I think it's the 22nd or something like that. And we talked about diverse. It was very interesting, and we were, we were able to be in an executive session with a lot of high-ranking public employees as well as electeds for a couple hours and listen to a great trainer and talk about how we all should get along better. But anyway, it was a great training, and yes, we've had our training. We're lucky enough to have, when Emmett brings in special guests, to be able to sit around lunch and talk with them one-on-one. That's been a great asset to us. So thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, I just want to just thank everyone who, for their volunteering on the committee and all their good work, and at the festival, too. So I see some faces that were attended to the festival and did some hard work, and I had some great conversations with, so always value all our volunteers, and this is a very worthy cause at a very important time, so thanks for everything you've done.
Commissioner Poole, oh, that was a mistake.
Commissioner at-large.
Yeah.
That's better. Les Poole, Gladstone. Here it is, October, and summer's over. God, I hate to say that, but it is. And there's a lot of serious things that are happening, and we're seeing some interesting antics on the national scene. And of course, I'm not here to comment about the presidential race or, or any of that. But as things pick up, I'm, you know, more and more folks are contacting me again, and one of the issues that I've been asked about, and I intended to bring up, was the situation with the roads. The city of Portland, they played ring around the rosy, for lack of a better description, in dealing with the roads, road fee, what was going to happen. And now that there's someone new running against the mayor, we suddenly find a road fee proposed in Portland. Here we are in Clackamas County, the months roll by, the roads continue to deteriorate. We need some input and update about where are we at with the roads? What are we going to do? It's a can that was kicked down the road, and you've inherited it, and you can't kick it again. So we've really got to get something going there, whatever it is, and I'm happy to participate. I'm not here to complain about it. I'm happy to participate, but we've got to do something, whether it's politically comfortable or not. The other issue is the remand of the urban growth planning. Folks at home, those of you that don't know much about it, just need to know that we have land that is, is controlled for the future, and that land can be urban or rural. And there's been a lot of legalities and a lot of jerking back and forth, for lack of a better description, going on. A lot of thrashing about in how we're going to expand the Portland region, how the growth boundary is going to be managed. And much of what Metro has done in the past has been challenged and overturned, and we're back in that same place. We had a hearing the other day. I, I heard that there was a four-to-one vote for the county to maintain a position it had, and then I saw the video of the hearing at Metro, and the only one I saw speak from the county was Commissioner Bernard, and he seemed against what the county was doing. So I'm a little confused. I'm not sure why we didn't have more representation there. Maybe it's because Metro's afraid to have evening meetings because folks might show up. But we need some clarity about that. Our future, our property values, and the trees that are being cut down for all of the infill are all at stake right now. And what happens with this, this Metro situation, with this growth boundary, we've got to all be on the same page, and the public needs to know what is going on, where are we coming from, and, and what are we going to get? What do we need? Because I don't think it was addressed in the past, and I, I think we're in some kind of a no-man's-land right now. So we're looking for some input about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I think my comments just for later this evening are on the housing and the, and the regional, regional housing situation we have, and I think Metro's urban growth boundary effect on that. But I do want to respond right now to this, the road situation, give folks an update. I, I agree, we need to do something, and as I stated several times, we've, in the past, that we, before I was ready to ask the voters to, for more money for roads, that we would find a way to make sure we were doing the most with what we had, we were using the current tax dollars as best as possible, and that we ought to help that along with some general fund money for an offset to meet the, the legal requirements to do so. So I am pleased to say that after years of doing nothing as far as surface treatments, you know, as it relates to asphalt and so forth, that in the past, last year, we, what? We put $500,000 on the board approved.
Million.
The year before, it was $500,000 for the first year. And then this year, we added a million to that. So we got 1.5 million added to that, to that need out of our general fund. And, you know, that, though we've, you know, I'd like to see that continue. Staff, on the other hand, has also come back with, in their budget proposal, which has been, I believe, implemented this year and this fiscal year, about three and a half million. So if you look at it in total, I think it's about $5 million will be put towards surface treatments, which we've never done that before. At least, I'm not saying never. In recent years, we have not done that. So this is kind of exceptional. But I do think, it still doesn't meet the need. Staff has indicated, I think Chair Ludlow, maybe in this article, even probably speaks to the 17 million, that staff has suggested that we need, or that's the shortfall. And, and while I think that's a lot to ask all in one fell swoop, I, I think that we ought to put something on the ballot, a little bit of that, something to make, to start making up some of that ground, as opposed to doing, you know, as opposed to doing nothing. But we've done something, so we haven't done nothing. We have, we have done something, but whether it's some kind of a, something that generates about $5 million, some source of $5 million on top of the $5 million, that'd be $10 million towards the problem, and I think that'd be huge. But we have done something, and hopefully we can come back next year and, and equal that commitment from the, from the general fund of 1.5 million on top of the staff's commitment of three and a half.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, we used to spend our timber money on roads. Secure rural schools money came from the federal government. We spent that after the money from the forests went away, and the money for the secure rural schools have faded to almost nothing. It's always a miracle if we get anything. I have kind of a different point of view. I think if we put it further, on the ballot, we're kicking it down the road. I don't see the voters supporting any increase in funding for roads. So I think we should set a figure, go out and talk to the community. I don't think we can do 17 million. I think we should go, set a figure, show the plans of what we're going to do with that money, and go out and sell it to the community, and then make the decision ourselves, not put it on the ballot. If it's reasonable, if it's fair, and the map shows where it'll be done, I think people get behind it. Many communities have done just that. So I think if we don't do that, we'll be kicking it down the road. The thing that Paul said is that, you know, the 1.5 million had to come from somewhere. Some of that came because we got extra timber money. Some of it came from the fact that our economy's improving, and we got extra tax revenue dollars. But eventually, if you dig too deep, it's got to come from somewhere, whether that's public safety, our health departments, and many, many programs could be affected by that. So you can only go so far before you start affecting those programs that we think are important. Community corrections, you know, a safe community, and road safety, and all those other programs. So I certainly will be supporting the same kind of money we had last year, but that's a ways away.
Commissioner Savis?
Just one clarification. This is a great topic. It's really important. I do want to say that, you know, every year, our tax, property tax assessor has indicated we have a little bit more revenue than the year before. So we don't need to take money that we don't have. We have new money. And even today, on Oregon Live, our tax assessor, our tax situation is on, on Oregon Live right now, probably in print next couple days, that we've got another 3% coming, which will be 20-some-odd million, I think. I think that's the estimate. I just want to off a memory here. And that's new revenue. So how we prioritize that new revenue without taking it from something is where the money is. We don't need to dig into old money or existing funding. We can take that new money and, and match our priorities with that, and that's, that's the approach I'm suggesting.
Commissioner Bernard?
Back and forth. The problem with that is that there, you know, if everything always stayed flat, that wouldn't be a problem. Problem is costs rise. Electricity rises, insurance costs rise, staffing costs rise. And, you know, during the, during the bad economy, we laid a lot of people off in our planning department that frankly, we need to get back on the payroll so that we can provide the service our taxpayers deserve. So I'm not, it's not quite that simple.
Well, the ping-pong ball has landed on the net. So, you know, at Metro, Les, you should know this, we purposely did not show up to testify. We had arranged with Metro what we call a facilitated discussion about what they view as the narrow remand, and that being the Stafford area. We had arranged that some time ago, where all the cities involved, two of which had caused a lawsuit that caused the remand, were at the table along with representatives from our commission. By the way, those representatives in this facilitated discussion that will happen very soon, are Commissioners Bernard and Schrader. So we did not go. I was certainly in the audience. I didn't testify because that is their show. We asked them not to hold that until we finished our process. They ignored that. That never happens very much with Metro, does it? So that was planned, and it's calculated, and we'll continue to work towards our goals. And one of the things that our commission intends to pursue at the next legislative session is the allowance of subregional planning. I mean, we have to realize that, sure, there might be some industrial land in Forest Grove that's developable, and therefore, we can't have industrial land, but that means our citizens have to drive to Forest Grove to work on that, at that property. So we need subregional planning. Now, about politically popular or unpopular, we have conducted polls for two years on the roads, and what, it doesn't matter about political fear, reality, the fact of the matter is, is people need knowledge. People need education about what our roads are like. That's what the road ahead is doing, to educate people. But along with the polling, polling says people think our roads are just fine. Now, we may throw something out there on the ballot, but what does it matter if people think you don't need that money? And that is the problem. We are only allowed to, to actually instigate and/or pass one thing here, not a gas tax, and certainly not, not creating a district. The only thing we can do without a vote of the people is a vehicle registration fee. We can have our own 43 bucks. However, the commission, the majority of commission has said, we can do that, but we're going to send it out to the voters. The majority of commission says that. Wait a minute, let me finish, for gosh sakes.
Oh, gas tax, you're wrong. Sorry. You're wrong on the gas tax. Only property tax measures have to.
You did that in Milwaukee, right?
Yes.
You imposed that?
Yes.
I won't do that without a vote.
Two cents.
Thanks for asking. So the point of the matter is, is it's not about political fear. I just want to make sure that people know, before we get there, that, that there is a problem, and not just guess that they know that. Now, in regards to our tax income going up, we've got to realize that we do get the 3% like all government entities. However, our costs go up, up to 4.5% and more. So it is not that we have extra money because this new money came in. New salaries go, they go up every year. So do understand there isn't a big bucket of money that we get to slurp from to use whatever purpose we want. We, we go through that in the budget and some 900 pages and decide where that money goes, and Dawn has a special dartboard for, I mean, post-it note situation where we get to choose the final bits of money and where they go. And believe me, it gets kind of stingy in the room at that time, so. Anyway, those few things. and decide where that money goes. And Don has a special dartboard for, I mean, post-it note situation where we get to choose the final bits of money and where they go. And believe me, it gets kind of stingy in the room at that time. So, any of those few things, look what you do to us, Les. You get us all talking and stuff. Anyway, that is that. And I will ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Okay. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have a board order approving the mental health director's designee to authorize a custody hold under O R S four two six two three three. Under our finance department, we have approval for authorization to purchase public safety communication equipment and services for Clackamas County Community Corrections from Motorola Solutions, Inc. Approval for authorization to purchase public safety communication equipment and services for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office from Motorola Solutions, Inc. Approval of an amendment for the personal services contract between Clackamas County Public and Government Affairs Office and Fish Marketing for Road Maintenance, Road Safety Outreach, Graphic Design, and Social Media Support Services. Under the elected officials, we have approval of previous business meeting minutes. Also approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County, the Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, and the City of Portland for Transit Police Services. And a request from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an annual operating plan and financial plan with the Oregon State Marine Board for the Clackamas County Boating Safety Action Plan. And under our Department of Emergency Services, approval of fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Commissioners want to pull any items? I'll enter into motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Savas, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? Just want to note that, you know, Tri-Met is paying us some money for policing the transit. And, you know, you used to read about a lot more problems, you still do, out in Gresham, unfortunately. But we got to report that there are nineteen jurisdictions involved in coordinating great police services on transit. Specifically, of course, that means both buses, and especially rail. So I'm happy to hear that. We had a couple of gentlemen show up, one from Portland Police, one from Milwaukee Police, and they talked of their efforts and explained that they've really coordinated how this should be taken care of in the near future. So any further discussion? Mary, you can call the roll.
Okay, Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
And Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes three zero. And now, be still my beating heart, it's time for the county commissioner, or county administrator update. Yes, you are.
Yes. So I've got a few items for you. One is, I did want to let you know that we do have two members of our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department spending this week down at Umpqua Community College to offer services in the wake of the school's recent tragedy. Our mental health specialists, Galley Murray and Teal Borer, are part of a regional team of trained professionals, and they're down there supporting students and staff as they return to the school. So I wanted to extend a special thanks to both Galley and Teal for doing that. Also, from H three S, congratulations to the Children, Youth, and Families Division. We received a Strategic Prevention Framework Partnership for Success Grant. This is a four-year, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar federal grant that will help the county prevent drug and alcohol abuse by teenagers and young adults in our county. Great work on the part of our H three S staff for doing that. And then, once again, we have another communication from a very satisfied customer in the county with our County Road Maintenance Department. A John N. from the unincorporated area in and around Lake Oswego writes, and he's got exclamation points on this, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. Those of us at the eastern end of Child's Road are celebrating. Your recent work that stripped away the brush in Blackberries is greatly appreciated. Based on the numerous deer kills during the past year, we are sure that the surviving deer appreciate it well." So I want to thank John for relaying his thoughts to us, and I want to extend a special thanks to our county road crew for their continued excellent work. And then I got information this morning, I had my monthly update with our technology services staff, and I was informed that we are experiencing more and more connections to our broadband exchange network. You know, we have about a hundred and eighty-six mile network that brings affordable high-speed access to more than a hundred and seventy community anchor sites within the county. And currently, you know, we're providing CBX broadband to some sixty-eight K through twelve schools, two colleges, and three different locations, sixteen libraries, and we've got three more to be connected within the coming year. We're providing broadband to some twelve medical facilities, nineteen fire stations, and seven State of Oregon sites. And so what's coming up is by the end of this fiscal year, we will expect to have all of the West Lynn-Wilsonville School District connected to the broadband network. So that's quite an accomplishment. And then the cities of West Lynn, Lake Oswego, and Oregon City, I will either have or will in the very near future connect to utilize our CBX network. So that's just terrific. We're also working to connect up into the city of Portland, to connect up to what's called the Piddick Building in downtown Portland, which will enhance our reach and extension to the, to the world at large by working with the expanded operations with local telecoms throughout the region. So great work on the part of our technology services. We're really happy about the success of our fiber system out there in the county.
Yeah, that's the Piddick Building, not the Piddick Mansion, by the way. All right, it's time for Commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Savas.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to talk about a little bit, we got a, it's about housing and the cost of, the cost of housing in the region. And we had a report from the Employment Department on Wednesday at the Clackamas County Business Alliance, and saw some of our numbers. And the numbers of employment, people employed, are rising after recovering from the recession. However, that the actual payroll and the actually hours worked are actually decreasing. So while we're, we're in a recovery, and where some of those jobs are coming back, they're not the same kind of jobs. And I also attended a economic forum this afternoon. And the issue there is the disappearing middle class. And what's happening is the price of housing, you know, is somewhat, the word San Francisco, or the town San Francisco keeps on coming up, as possibly we're headed towards what San Francisco has realized. Now, it is a very expensive housing where most folks cannot afford to live. And as the, we try to build what we call affordable housing, that is not quite affordable. And, you know, we need to find a way to build affordable housing versus building unaffordable affordable housing. And I think it's going to take a different model. But the urban growth boundary, I can't say this is fact. I can, I hear a lot of realtors and a lot of folks talk about the connection between the urban growth boundary and the rising prices by virtue of demand, which I, you know, I tend to agree with. But the, the whole issue here is, is that how are we doing as a region? I mean, ten years ago, when I sat on impact, the stats were, the stats were coming in, all the results, the disparity between the cost of housing and the average family wage income was growing. I mean, it was less affordable, less affordable. Ten years, and here we are today, and we, as a region, we have not made any adjustment. We haven't really acknowledged that we need to make an adjustment. And I really think there's a need for a regional discussion on how we actually cope with it. On one hand, I know that the metro region talks about the successes of our, what's called smart growth. But we also got to, we got to own up to some of the problems that we are facing. And I think the remand is part of that. We talked about that. I think it was a number of things. The Urban Growth Report that was issued and accepted by the Metro Council is, you know, obviously being challenged by the Realtors Association, the Home Builders Association, most of the mayors in the region, most of the counties in the region. There's a problem. And we need to actually make an adjustment to fix that, because I think no one wants to be in a situation where they can no longer afford your home. And, and our kids and our friends who have housing, it has to be affordable. And jobs is part of that affordability, and we're not making any ground on jobs like we need to. Our population is growing faster than we can grow jobs in the region. And that's why employment land is so darn important. And I was a little bit taken aback from at least parts of what I heard from the meeting last Thursday. I was kind of taken aback by there was no one in the room that spoke to the need for employment land in Clackamas County, as though there is no need. And yet, we know it. We know it's been a crisis. It's been a crisis for over twenty years, and no real mention of that. I think that's problematic, and I'm inclined, despite our agreement not to testify, I'm inclined to go to the next metro hearing that they have on that and speak to that, because someone needs to raise that issue. We need to have a level playing field, and if we can't grow jobs in this county, the issues that I spoke to just moments ago are only going to grow. So that's what I have for today. But I do have Archie.
Oh, yeah.
So let's talk about Archie. Archie's going to come up on the screen here. There we go. Great. This is Archie. He is a young fella. He is looking for a best friend. He is happy, friendly, and attentive. He will stick to you like Velcro for comfort, and he can't wait to start a new life with someone like you. So for more information about Archie and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at five oh three six five five eight six two eight, or W W W clackamas.us forward slash dogs.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
Maybe I should have read that one. That is the dog we found.
Oh, is it?
Near our property, now that you say that. Very nice dog. We only had it for a few minutes. Actually, had it all night, and Danielle took it to the shelter in the morning.
Small world.
Yeah, it is.
Interesting.
First thing I noticed on the camera, that it looks like I have a shaved head. I'm not trying to look like John.
Hey, hey.
I just cut it short. But Paul, you need to get a haircut.
Oh, man.
I guess I'll start with one comment that Paul made, is an agreement not to testify at the metro hearing. We had no such agreement. And because you asked a question, I'll tell you what I, why I had testified. The four to one vote, it was actually three, one abst- didn't Martha abstain?
No, I think she voted.
Okay. So it was four one. I voted, I don't even remember what the vote exactly was.
Well, the vote was for these additional properties that we think ought to be taken into consideration for an designation.
Okay. So just to clarify, you know, the process took two years. Thousands of people testified, thousands of papers, written testimony. And frankly, I think that the remand is narrow. And just because it's narrow doesn't mean it's the end of the world. We need to resolve the remand and move forward. Lots of things can change. The so-called fifty years, it's actually twenty before they look at it. And I, I just think that, on another issue, which I agree with the commission totally, that Metro made a decision on the urban growth boundary expansion. Their decision was wrong. I think that, so I testified that I thought the remand should be narrow. I think the Stafford area is the issue. I think it's, it's resolvable. It's going to take some time. There are lots of plans out there, and I think if you sit down with the community, we can resolve it. If you throw the system out, Stafford's the first thing that gets developed, and we have very little control at that point. So it only makes sense that we spend the time to find out what would work, and it's not going to make everybody happy. But there, I think there is a possible way to resolve that. I also went to an economic development conference this morning, put on, sponsored by Key Bank. And we, they also talked about housing. You know, during the housing boom, there were so many houses being built, and they had total price control just about. You had to pay what they asked for, or tough luck. Lot of those people who built those homes are out of business. So there, there's a lot of cautious, caution out there about building a whole lot of extra homes. So in Villebois, for example, I had not, that's where I used to live, in Wilsonville, I was just totally shocked to go over there and see how much has been built. Now they're even testing smaller homes, not tiny homes, but eight hundred square foot, homes like that in that community, as well as multifamily homes. So there's a lot of caution. They said that, they thought that the economy will be strong or steady for the next three years. That partially because of that fear of over-expanding, there isn't as great a risk. And also, the banks are a little more risk averse, even though I must have heard twice there that they thought that the bank regulations should go away. I don't know where that came from, but that's what they thought. By the way, I got there on light rail, my first unofficial trip on light rail. It was fantastic, except I got off too early and had to walk about seven blocks. But I talked to somebody who saves a hundred and three dollars, a hundred and seventy-three dollars a month because of light rail. That's their downtown parking bill. And the meeting was at the art museum. Employment, one thing that I thought was, you know, those employment reports are really useless. You know that to be employed, you can just work one hour a week. It doesn't make any sense that you would have a report that is one hour, and then they don't know what your job is. Are you getting paid six dollars an hour, nine dollars an hour, or five hundred dollars an hour? They don't know that. Those statistics are a little, I thought they were a little bit useless. One thing that, let me see, Metro. So at, I guess that's really about all I can, I really have tonight. I look forward to the discussions on the road, on road funding in the next budget cycle, and continuing to educate the public. Next week, we have a chamber event, and you, are you announcing that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. As I mentioned, Commissioners attended Northwest Public Employee Diversity Conference. Also, most, these three regularly attend the Clackamas County Business Alliance meeting. We keep in touch with our business people, and keep them informed, and they keep us informed. We had our quarterly budget committee meeting. This is where we take the pulse of certainly the county budget, but we also take advice from our laypeople. It's an opportunity for the people who are not elected to speak their mind about how they think we might improve the process of approval of our budget. We set federal legislative agenda, or actually more like viewed it, because we pretty much, it's the same every year, and we don't get much, frankly. So it's a bit of a struggle on that. You know, we were talking about affordable housing. We had the occasion to do ribbon cutting down near Clackamas Town Center, at something called Town Center Greens. Now, it is affordable housing, which means that it's subsidized for those people qualify who live there. However, there's nothing affordable about building affordable housing. This is sixty units for fifteen million dollars. That means for every apartment unit, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, if people had their druthers, and this has been proven out by a fantastic survey by the home builders, eighty percent of the people say if the price and location were right, they'd rather be in a single-family home. I guarantee you, for two hundred and fifty large, you can probably put them on a fairly small lot and have them a single-family home. But instead, we spend for this. It is, is great that it affects and helps those people who are in need, but it's darned expensive to build public subsidized housing. This Saturday, in case you, you want to go, it's up at the Oregon Golf Center, but it's the Clackamas Women's Services thirtieth anniversary gala. So if you want to go, I think they're still available. Great organization, does fantastic things for many people here in the county. The, we have the Business in the County Lunch Forum, is what that one is, with the North Clackamas Chamber. We met with them last week and talked with them on an informal basis. It'll be a little bit more formal, but we're always really loose when it comes to questions. The, the thing, I want to give our, my unsung hero for the week. The SHIBA, that's S H I B A, team, Senior Health Insurance Benefit Assistance for Clackamas County, are truly unsung heroes, each and every day providing critical assistance, serving over sixty thousand Medicare beneficiaries and those new to Medicare in Clackamas County. No words can adequately express how amazing the contributions of our certified SHIBA, I'll call it SHIBA, counselor volunteers are. They generously give the gift of time, giving of themselves, their skills, abilities, compassion, intellect, and humor. Through their tremendous efforts- Through their tremendous efforts in outreach, education, and counseling, they connect people with Medicare assistance and many additional needs, which may otherwise go unmet. On behalf of our staff and the community you serve, we want to thank you for your leadership, dedication, experience you bring to the SHIBA program. The last thing I'd like to mention to you is the last town hall for this year. It is the topic of honor, utilize, promote, and invest our natural resources. It's at Welch's Resort at the Mountain in the evening at six P M. for an hour and a half, Wednesday, October twenty-eighth. So write that down. It's the last one for this calendar year. And the last thing I want to tell you is this, and this was written by a very wise woman, and it says, "Call your mother. Tell her you love her. Remember, you're the only person who knows what her heart sounds like from the inside." Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the commission this evening, this meeting is adjourned.